Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. I will call to order the City Council meeting for August 5th, 2025, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, Clerk Beck, can we do a roll call, please?
Mayor Monget.
Here.
Mayor Proton Wong.
Hello.
Counselor Barnes.
Good evening.
Counselor Friedland.
Good evening.
Counselor Gallegos.
Good evening.
Counselor Sampson.
Good evening.
And Counselor Tapia Vega.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Okay, we'll begin tonight's meeting with public input. If you wish to speak during this time, please fill out one of these white speaker forms here that you can access through the glass doors at the back and then pass it over to Clerk Beck, and then we can get you on the list. You'll have five minutes to speak. Please state your name and address before you do so. You'll also have the opportunity to call in as well. So, and then please correct me if I mispronounce your name or anything like that. I believe this first name is, this is Dave Eckert? Or Dane, or Dave?
Paul.
Oh, Paul, never mind. Close enough. Come on up.
Yes, come on up, please. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen. The reason I came today, I'm a contractor, and we have been attempting to obtain a building permit for the last two years and two months from your planning department. We have submitted appropriate documents to do so two years ago, May 20th, 2023, had heard nothing for the first 10 months. In March of '24, a Lauren Victor sent an email to me saying she was reviewing our application and would get back to us in a week or two. Nothing happened until June. In June, well, rather, we had a, let me digress, we had a meeting in April with Jeff Brazel and Kevin Schulman and one other gentleman, his name I don't remember, who acknowledged the fact that we had an application in by virtue of telling me that he has numerous emails to me regarding said application. I said, "Really? Show me. I have two." He could show me no more than two. The first one was the application. His call, his email to me telling me I had to fill out an application, and his second email was sending me the form to do so. I heard nothing from him since, until April of that year when we had a meeting here in this building. I called him a liar. I felt very put out that he would tell me something like that, that he couldn't prove. Left with a bad taste in my mouth, I was here with a representative of Circle K. I should digress again. This is regarding the Circle K station here on 201 or 225 West South Boulder Road. What we're attempting to do is build a small shed, 112 square feet. I'm licensed in 27 different jurisdictions, and I have never, ever been faced with a situation like this. I've been able to walk in over the counter and get permits for such things as small. Here, it doesn't work that way, not mine to say. However the system works, I'll go through with it. But more has happened since. As I said, Lauren Victor sent me the notice in March of '24. In June of '24, Stephen Williams took over and denied that we had even ever sent in an application. I said, "Oh, contraire. Ms. Victor has told me three months ago that she's working on it. Don't you know what you're doing in your own department?" That didn't go over well. I'm sarcastic, admittedly, and frustrated. To date, we have turned in every single paper requested, answered every question requested. I have been told that my submittals are illegible. I said, "How so? They're submitted to me electronically. I communicate electronically to you. Why can't you read them?" Mr. Williams says he cannot. I offered to hard copy, 24 by 36. I was told absolutely not. We will not accept any kind of communication other than electronic. I found that a little strange. I wanted to solve a problem. He wouldn't let me solve the problem. I have much more to say, but I know I'm limited in time. I prepared a binder, and I'd like to distribute it to all of you, but I don't have copies. I think that you need a lot more information from me to make any kind of decision anyway. So what I'm going to do is, if I, if you can give me some direction here as to how I should do this.
Pass it to Clerk Beck here, and she can pass along. If you pass the binder to our clerk here.
I haven't, but it's quite voluminous, and it's going to require a lot of copying. I'm perfectly willing to do that on my own and bring it back and resubmit it, because it gives a chronological order of how these things happen, what happened, who said what, and it's in writing. It's irrefutable. And I've got nowhere else to go with this. I've lost a tremendous amount of money on this little project. Circle K is looking at me as though I'm some kind of pariah now because I can't solve this problem for them. We had a meeting two days ago at which they suggested, "Get a lawyer." I don't want to get a lawyer. I'm against that. It wastes money for both sides, and it's really foolish. I think this is, this is something that can be resolved, and in my, my limited knowledge of how you do things here, I see that the City Council does prevail, or at least sees what the planning department does and approves it, especially in situations like this permit, prior to the planning department getting back to me and issuing the permit. So maybe I've just missed a step here and come forward to you folks ahead of time, but I don't know where else to go.
That's okay.
I am in a Supreme bind here. I need to solve the problem. That's what I do.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. You are at your time, but if, if you pass over your binder and materials that you brought over, you can pass it to Clerk Beck, sitting right over here, and she can get us copies. And so we'll have those.
I would be happy to do that.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Laura Webb.
Thank you. Hello, I am Laura Webb. We live in Hawk Bridge Estates, and a number of us are concerned about vegetation management and the Rothman open space with respect to fire mitigation. The western border of our neighborhood of Butts, that open space and trail, we're looking for advice on where to start and what we might get help from from the city. I'm a biology professor. My husband is a deputy fire chief, so we very much value the ecological importance of open spaces. I think we assess fire risk in a very measured, conservative way with the deputy fire chief husband. He helped me prepare the pictures and the remarks that he's serving tonight at National Light Out with his department. The biggest concern is about ladder fuels in the open space, fuels that conduct fire upward. We see these fuels in two places. The first is in all the dead wood in the grove of trees that's at the north end of that open space that would carry flames up into the forest. There's a lot of very fine, dead, branching material that I understand actually is the fuel that presents the greatest risk. It's really not about the big trunks. My understanding is that if the dead wood is felled and chipped and it's down on the ground where it's moist, it really reduces the fire risk. The second source of ladder fuels in the open space is in the dead lower branches that are right in contact with the grass, and often they're dead on those evergreens, and those conduct the fire up from the grasses up through the trees. We've limbed up individual trees right near our fence line, but of course, most of those trees are not in an area we're allowed to manage, you know, within that four-foot strip. So ladder fuels are the first concern. The second and last is decoupling the open space from the neighborhoods with some strategic mowing, perhaps, of fire breaks. Some of us mow along our individual fences. We have, but it's not practical for a lot of people. It's pretty rough work. You have to get out there with string trimmers and some brawn and heavy-duty motors, mowers. So I wondered if the city had any plans to mow along those fence lines. There are also decoupling risks, too. I believe it's called the Lafayette Park Two neighborhood to our west, which is between the Rothman Open Space and 111th. They have a lot of dead and dying vegetation right up against the privacy fences, which I know is a real, the privacy fences are a real problem to start with. A lot of dead vegetation against them creates a big fire load. Our HOA finally is going to be replacing our northern fence line, too, there along Arapa Hall, and there are a lot of trees that are on the Lafayette side right up against that northern fence line. This is silly, I'm a professor and I hear my voice shaking because I haven't been in front of the City Council. Can we limb up those trees? Can we remove the trees that are on the outside? Will the city help us? Two of us, myself and our HOA president, Guy Higgins, have actually communicated the concerns to open space through their portal this year, but we haven't gotten any response back from either one of us, so we're looking for some advice on next steps. I do know there's a Lafayette open space advisory meeting, I think on Thursday, and I thought I would go there, but I don't know if you have other advice.
All right. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Okay, next up, we have Mike Page.
Evening, Council Mike Page, Uqut Circle, Lafayette, Colorado. There are four members on council now that were present June 26, 2023, to vote on ordinance number nine, which was a unanimous vote to increase or set the speed limit for Wanaka Lake Trail and other city trails to 15 miles an hour. Did you know that 16 miles an hour is a racing speed? I rewatched the meeting, and the answer to that question is no. Nobody told you. So I don't know how that figures in your mind now, people running at 15 miles an hour, 60 miles an hour is a racing speed. So I'm going to skip the rest of the, a big chunk of the text I submitted to you here and talk to you a little bit more about daily use in the Wanaka Lake Trail area. I'm a daily user there, Wanaka Lake Trail area. I used to be twice daily user, but I quit going on the evening walks because of the chaos created by speeding and reckless bikers, which became much worse once e-bikes started to appear. I've been reporting reckless bikers to the city for quite some time now, hopeful that the complaint-generated response, which was suggested to you on June 26, 2023 by your open space director, might actually work. LOL. One biker in particular that I have reported frequently since April 2023 shows no regard for signage, to slow down, show the trail, bicyclist yield to pedestrians, or the safety of other users. He seems to enjoy buzzing people, pass people as physically close as possible at high speeds, riding between two pedestrians walking in opposite directions on a narrow trail, and most recently, careening down a steep section of the trail without regard to the presence of pedestrians and dogs at the bottom of the drop-off. That was me. The city has received video evidence of all these incidents. Lafayette police received video copies of the collision incident. It was June 12th, and this reckless biker ran into me with his bike on a steep slope shown in your map. He fled the scene and never looked back. Maybe he imagined himself on some sort of mountain biking adventure and recklessly plunged into the steepness of the trail, too bad if anyone else happened to be on the trail at the same time as I was with my dogs. I contacted the police, filed a report. Incident number is 2025-01-830. The investigating officer visited me at my home, listened to my description of the collision, took a picture of my wound, and encouraged me to call dispatch again whenever I saw this biker on the trail. I made several subsequent calls to BOCO dispatch when I saw the biker back on the trail, but Lafayette police have not yet been able to make contact with this person. When I most recently called BOCO dispatch about the biker being on the trail, I was told that the incident report had been deactivated. I was shocked because I had not been informed of that action. Later, the original investigating officer called me and explained that the incident had been deactivated after he reviewed the video of the incident with some colleagues. They referenced municipal codes 80-54, 80-94 dot 117, and concluded that I had not moved out of the way of the biker, and therefore, the collision was my fault. This is a classic example of blaming the victim. I texted back, repeating my explanation during the interview. Number one, there was no room to step out of the way on the trail we were on. Number two, there was not enough time to step out of the way because it just happened in a flash. I heard scratching gravel, trying to brake. The biker was unable to stop and ran into me and then left the scene. That's a very narrow section of trail, as evidenced in the video. The collision site is at the bottom of a very steep section of trail, so steep, in fact, that biker was unable to stop. And Municipal Code 80-94 dot 117 Open Space Use Regulation states bicyclist yield to pedestrians. Yielding the rideaway requires slowing down to a safe speed, being prepared to stop, establishing communication, and passing safely. This biker violated every aspect of that municipal ordinance. He failed to slow down to a safe speed. He was not prepared to stop. He tried but failed to stop before he collided with me. He did not pass safely. I was injured in the collision, but somehow, the blame for the collision is now assigned to me. I've heard nothing further from the investigating officer, but I will continue to contact BOCO dispatch when I sign this rider on the trail. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Vicki Eulen.
Hi, I'm Vicki Eulen, 303 West Simpson Street, and I wanted to talk to you about the Patangars Highway Bar Coca-Cola sign and the RFP the city has issued to give the sign away and potentially move it out of Lafayette. For background, the sign was unearthed in the summer of 2015 as the building at Public and Geneseo was being demolished. You may remember how excited the public was to see the sign and their desire to preserve it. The building owners didn't want the sign, so the city took ownership, and it was moved to the wall of the building at Simpson and Public as part of an agreement between Laura and Rick Ross, the building owner. Before it was moved, the sign was stored and restored in the fire station, which we were told was the only building in the city big enough to house it. Laura Chair Sally Martin told the Daily Camera that 62 residents and businesspeople raised almost $126,000 to restore the sign, and the city paid about $10,000 to move the sign to its current location. I recently talked to Rebecca Schwindler, who was the Historic Preservation Board chair at the time the sign was unearthed. She forwarded me the Conservationist's report to the city dated February 23rd, 2016. The report states, quote, "Monitoring the appearance of the sign over the next few years and addressing damages will be crucial for the long-term preservation of the sign." The Conservationist also gave the city a weekly and yearly maintenance plan. Rebecca also forwarded me an email thread in June 2017 from Susan Booker to the Conservationist in which Booker said she was assigned to, quote, "Provide oversight and monitoring of the Coke mural after its installation." Rebecca believes that didn't happen. She wrote to me, "I do remember offering to Booker multiple times that I would be the liaison because it didn't seem any maintenance was happening, and I consistently noticed paint flanks below the sign, and she either declined my offer or didn't respond." Meanwhile, the sign kept deteriorating, even though members of the public and the HPP repeatedly asked city staff to repair the sign. A few years after Bridget Keating was hired in 2020, she told me she was looking into what to do with the sign. She consulted a conservationist who recommended either the city keep the sign where it is and do a restoration that includes UV protection and plexiglass or an awning at a price of $90,000 to $100,000 for the restoration, or move the sign indoors to protect it. The HPP opted to move the sign indoors, but as we already knew, there isn't a building in the city big enough to house it and allow the public to view it. And in your June 3 packet, there's a letter from Rick Ross asking that council keep the sign on his building, maintain it as the city had promised to do, and honor the wishes of the many people who paid to have the sign restored. Apparently, the city has ignored this because on July 3, the staff issued an RFP to not only give away the sign, but pay to, quote, "Cover the cost of removal, transportation, and if necessary, wall installation within Boulder County. For locations outside of Boulder County, cost-sharing arrangements will be discussed." If any of you are baseball fans, this reminds me of the Rockies' Nolan Aronato trade. Not only does the city want to give away a popular attraction, but it's proposing to actually pay someone to take it. And look how that worked out for the Rockies. Add to that that there was no public discussion of the terms of the RFP before it was issued, and I think this is a slap in the face to the many people who have devoted time and money to preserving this historic piece of Lafayette. I realize that none of you were on council, and much of the current staff wasn't here when the sign was restored and the city neglect began. But now you have an opportunity to right that wrong rather than compounding it by just washing your hands of the sign. What I propose is that the city keep the sign and once again, mount a public campaign to restore it, but this time with a concrete plan to ensure the sign is conserved into the future, perhaps through funding from our new downtown development authority. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Deb Jones.
I'm Deb Jones. My address is 11307 Quidus Way, Westminster, Colorado. I am the president of Prairie Dog Action, and I'm here to speak on kind of what's been going on with prairie dogs here in Lafayette. And I'm going to read this because I didn't have time to rehearse it. And I'm going to read this because I didn't have time to rehearse it. Mayor and council members, thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I'm here this evening as a prairie dog relocator with over 30 years of experience, having successfully relocated hundreds of thousands of prairie dogs to new homes all across the Front Range. I've worked and continue to work closely with the City of Lafayette Open Space Department, Indian Peaks Golf Course, and the Water Utilities Department, and Lafayette Private Developers to ensure humane solutions that balance community needs and wildlife preservation. I served on the Prairie Dog Advisory Working Group, which crafted the 2020 Prairie Dog Management Ordinance to reflect the community's values and the city council's directive to prioritize humane methods. Our goal was to ensure humane practices and work toward better ecosystem protections and recognize the connectivity of the wildlife species found within the City of Lafayette and provide humane conflict resolution practices to the city and public. I'm here to express a deep concern about the recent prairie dog poisoning on July 25th and August 1st. These actions conducted in the early hours with little transparency have greatly shaken the public trust. Despite my efforts to collaborate with city staff and the landowner to propose relocation as an alternative since a release site was available, these efforts were not considered. On July 18th, uh, I again informed staff that the U.S. Army Pueblo Chemical Depot would be accepting prairie dogs starting August 4th. I submitted a live relocation estimate of $10,000. Staff later requested I reduce this to $5,400 to match the extermination bid and idea. Yet, the very next day, the first poisoning occurred. I then contacted the landowner directly. I had not been introduced to this lady, but staff had asked me to contact her, so I did, to relocate the remaining 20 prairie dogs that survived the first poisoning at no cost. But the landowner dismissed my offer and proceeded with the second extermination on, on August 1st, where inhumane handling practices were witnessed and recorded. These events violate the spirit and intent of the 2020 ordinance, which was designed to ensure humane treatment of prairie dogs following years of public outcry over similar poisonings. The community feels misled, especially after the landowner claimed to have hired a relocator while employing an exterminator known in the area. This has eroded trust in the city's commitment to its own policies, and the root issue lies in misinterpretation of the ordinance, compounded by staff turnover that has led to a loss of institutional memory. The current staff lacks the context of the decades of public advocacy and the rigorous work PDOG undertook to create a policy reflecting Lafayette's values. I respectfully request that the city council reconvene the Prairie Dog Advisory Working Group. I've been in contact with the past members of PDOG, and all agree we need to clarify the ordinance, close loopholes, and train staff to uphold its humane intent. We feel we can restore public confidence and ensure that Lafayette leads by example in wildlife management. I want to thank you for your time and consideration, and I'm eager to work with you to address the issue and prevent future missteps like what has occurred in the last two weeks. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next up, we have Larrie Yamaya Thayer.
Good evening. It's Laura Yamaya Thayer, 440 London Avenue, Lafayette. First of all, I would just like to thank council for, um, hearing, um, Deb Jones and myself and the others of us who are here to express our extreme disappointment about the lethal poisoning that occurred at the Westgate offices on South Boulder Road. I was part of the public where we filled this city council, and many of you are new, and that happened before you took your seat here today, but the people were literally lining the halls to get protection for our local prairie dog communities. The people of Lafayette are passionate not only about prairie dogs, but because we understand that they are part of a wider, broader, more important ecosystem. The prairie dog ecosystem is the most endangered single ecosystem on the entire planet, and we here have precious remnants of that in the prairie dog. Colorado is trying to reintroduce the black-footed ferret. Black-footed ferrets eat nothing but prairie dogs. So we are working against ourselves with the government poisoning them on one hand and then trying to reintroduce, reintroduce them on the other hand. It's just crazy. I understand that you, as the council, had no hand in this. This was a misunderstanding between the staff and the new people and the ordinance that we worked so hard to put in place so long ago. The new staff needs to be brought up to speed about what this really means. The prairie dog working group has been abandoned, and that's just not right. We need to re-educate the new open space staff and the new city staff about when a special permit is required to eradicate prairie dogs and when the advisory panel, the prairie dog working group, needs to be informed and to step in and do something about it. As Deb said, she was willing to do this for free, just, you know, no money at all, a sweat off her brow to save these prairie dogs. And yet, the landowner and staff let them go ahead and poison them. I don't want to talk your ear off too long. I guess what we're really asking for is, as Deb so clearly stated, you need to close any loopholes and clarify the wording and make staff understand that there is an alternative to just breaking out poisons. We don't want to poison our land. We want to move these animals somewhere where they can thrive and be part of the precious prairie that we need to preserve here in the state of Colorado. To that end, I want to just donate one of, a copy of the book I wrote, Polly the Prairie Dog. It is a children's book, and, um, whether or not you have children, I would like you to read it because it's very informational, especially the foreword talks about, um, why we need prairie dogs, why they're so important, and it's beautifully illustrated. So if you're not a reader, you can just enjoy a lot of beautiful pictures of prairie dogs. And so if I give this to you, to this back, can you give this to the council? Just trying to spread the word about why prairie dogs are so important, and please help us with this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, next up, we have Roy Johnson.
My name is Roy Johnson, 2547 Sweetwater Circle. I'm going to speak a little faster this time so I don't run over that five-minute thing. I wish to speak regarding the $118 million in new taxes that you wish to pass. I know the city council has not finalized a decision on how to place the capital bounty improvement projects on the ballot, but certainly appears clear that you want the language to specify a property tax increase as opposed to a sales tax increase for funding. In regards to the tax method, raising property tax will directly affect the affordable housing priority the city is supposed to have, as enumerated in the comprehensive plan, as was enumerated by many of you in the council. Every dollar increase in property tax will reduce the chances of a home buyer being able to qualify for a home loan in regards to the debt-to-income ratio. In this context, the debt being the monthly PITI, principal interest, tax, and insurance, divided by the monthly income. Every dollar increase in property tax results in less principal a buyer can qualify for and decreases the chance of getting qualified for and being able to buy a home. The Denver Post reported on June 20th this year that Colorado was number one in this country, in the country, in last year, home loan escrow increases a 31% increase. That increase from insurance costs increases as well as property tax increases. In addition, National Association of Realtors reported on July 14th this year that Colorado escrow payment amounts have increased 62% over the past five years, timed with Florida with the highest increase in the country for this five-year period. So we're number one. In addition, the increase to escrow for tax not only affects new home buyers, but also current homeowners. This includes senior citizens and others on fixed or limited incomes who may face losing their homes as this 31% or 62% five-year increase, plus the increase you want to place on them over the next 20 years can be insurmountable for some to overcome. A property tax increase will also affect renters. Certainly, vast majority landlords will pass on this increased cost to renters. Affordable housing means a lot more than a few deed-restricted properties and subsidized housing. The affordable housing principle should include making it possible for senior citizens and others to be able to continue living and keep the homes they're living in, and for first-time buyers to be able to purchase a home. The main point I'm trying to make today is funding this with property tax increase versus a sales tax increase will result in higher rents, directly affect first-time home buyers' ability to buy a home, and directly affect senior citizens and others on a fixed or limited income from keeping their homes, adding new taxes to the already 62% increase in escrow costs over the, over the last five years. I urge you to specify the funding and the boundary to sales tax funding as opposed to property tax funding. It's not too late to change this, and we're getting late in the game here, but it's not too late. You haven't finalized this. City council started taking direction of property taxes or sales taxes before these last two reports of June and July I mentioned, and it's certainly reasonable and prudent to reconsider having this new information, uh, which seems substantial. I know, I know you all want these capital improvement projects to pass. Changing the funding to sales tax will improve the chances that they will pass and are more consistent to the principle of affordable housing the city and most of you have expressed, and I believe you are sincere. In closing, the First Amendment says, "We, my fellow citizens, with the courage to stand up here and express our opinions, have the right to express our opinions." First Amendment does not mandate you to listen, and it does not mandate you to seriously consider what any of these people or I have to say, but it asks that you do anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, next up is Meredith Blanchard.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you for the time today. I emailed y'all earlier today, so I'll be very brief. Um, oh, apologies. Meredith Blanchard, 1545 Hecklow Way in Lewisville. I don't have anything prepared, so I will try not to ramble, but I live adjacent to where this prairie dog poisoning is happening. Um, I walk by these prairie dogs multiple times a day with my dogs, um, and they're really stinking adorable, and I really enjoy watching them and their antics every day. I know a lot of my neighbors do as well, because we will run into each other on the trail and, and watch them, and it's heartbreaking to think that now they're being poisoned. We enjoy the nature that is in that area by Hecklow Lake, but near Wanaka Lake. Um, these prairie dogs, I, I just, I can't fathom a reason that is good enough to kill these cute little families, um, that are just minding their own business and enriching the land. So I just wanted to voice my opposition to it. It sounds like none of y'all are really the decision-makers on the permit that was issued. But if there's anything that can be done to restrict that permit, end that permit, because I, I think I heard that it goes until the 10th. It's just, it's really heartbreaking to hear what's happening to that cute little colony. Um, there were a ton of babies born in the spring. It's just been so much fun to watch, and now it's really just a whole different feeling walking by there, knowing that, um, they're all being killed. It's quite sad. So that's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, okay. Uh, and finally, we have Vanessa Seabright.
Thank you very much for the time and the opportunity to speak. Um, my name is Vanessa Seabright. I'm a speech-language pathologist and a language-based learning disorder specialist. I am the owner of Twice Exceptional Speech Language and Educational Therapy. I have been a speech-language pathologist and also a Medicaid provider for the last 18 years. I specialize in working with children that have neurodevelopmental disabilities, including apraxia of speech, autism, um, neurodevelopmental disorders, including, um, dyslexia, dysgraphia, and also executive functioning. The kids that I work with are incredibly medically fragile. Um, they're medically complex. Um, they're also immunocompromised. They have comorbid disorders such as epilepsy, um, congenital heart defects, things like that. Um, I purchased the, uh, building and lots at 1135 Semeron Drive, um, in the end of February, and, um, I would say that the purchase was, I was misled about the extent of the difficulties with the prairie dogs and the history of it. What is really important is that I, I do validate everything that, and the opinions that, that are held here, and as passionate as, as everybody else is in regard to prairie dogs, is how equally passionate I am about serving my kids in my community, kids with special needs, and that I am having, I'm expanding my business so that I am a speech-language pathologist, um, but I'm also creating a, um, inclusive preschool for kids with speech, language, learning, literacy, executive functioning, and motor planning challenges. And with childhood apraxia of speech and autism in particular, um, my kids deserve to be able to go outside, and, and they can't right now because of the, of the abundant amount of feces and holes that are everywhere. Kids, especially with apraxia and global apraxia, have motor planning challenges, so that activities of daily living, like moving around and being able to walk with great agility, is very hard for them. Also, being able to wash their hands is also very, very, very hard. Putting on their shoes, taking them on and off, is very hard. I work with kids with autism who sensory seek, and that they also sometimes put their hands in their mouth due to their, their neurodevelopmental disabilities. So what I have to say here is that I, I really respect what you guys are, how passionately you guys feel, but I need to create a safe environment for the kids that I work with, and that they deserve to be outside, and that I, I understand that Deb Jones had a lot of influence in, in curating the previous code, and, and I think that that influence also extended to my personal permit, which I don't necessarily think is the way in which the permitting process is, is supposed to go. Moreover, yes, um, Deb did quote me $10,000, which is, um, essentially $357 per prairie dog in order to relocate them. But that I also got five more bids, and that the other bids were essentially $200 per prairie dog. Either way, I, I don't have $200 per prairie dog to move them. That, that what is being asked of me in regard to $36,000 of relocation fees, that, um, installing a prairie dog exclusion fence at the cost of $80 a linear foot equating to $90,000, being, being requested to increase vegetation, especially when we hear others being very concerned about wildlife at wildfire risk, and me possibly losing my, my entire ability to be insured because I can't increase my wildfire risk, um, and that I had, I, we have looked into bobcat urine, we have looked into all the different things, predator purchase. I have gone through this entire process, the process with, um, the city has been extensive, and I will, um, echo what Mr. Eckert said, that it is cumbersome and, um, that communication is, is not great. But I have satisfied all of the, um, you know, things that I needed to do, and that despite after the fact Ms. Jones offering to do it for free, that the reality is, is that Ms. Jones's nonprofit organization is not licensed in the, in the City of Lafayette. is that Ms. Jones's nonprofit organization is not licensed in the city of Lafayette to have a business license. So I can't even use this, and conversely, her nonprofit organization was revoked by the IRS August 13th.
Ms. Seabright, you are at your five minutes.
Okay.
Would you mind replying?
Yep, 2018. So I cannot, I cannot accept an in-kind donation from a nonprofit, and that if there was an offer to have a company relocate and not be paid for, I would have absolutely done that. But again, my most important thing that I need to do is I need to protect the lives and safety of the kids that I serve.
Thank you. All right, thank you. We did have another form come in for Ann Higgins, or, please correct me if I mispronounced your name.
Huggins with a U.
Huggins.
Hi, thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. Thanks for being willing to learn and rediscover prairie dog action in the city of Lafayette. I've been involved with prairie dog action for the 20 years that I've lived here. I have an environmental degree from CU. I give everybody my pedigree. When I come up here, I was on the LEAS Act Committee for four years, and I was on the Prairie Dog Action Committee of late. We have done a lot of work to make sure that poisonings do not happen in the middle of the night, that City Council is brought into this, that the Prairie Dog Action Group was brought into this so that we can write these ordinances, so that young children aren't affected by poison in our community, and so just, I would like to reconvene the Prairie Dog Action, Wildlife Action Committee, PDOG. I would offer to continue to be on the Action Committee. I do know that some of the members here tonight, including Deb Jones, have been hired, I would believe hired by the city at different times. Because she is a professional relocator, I even volunteered at one point. It was always hard to find places to relocate, but Colorado has come up to speed on how valuable the biodiversity is, and includes prairie dogs. So again, what's one person's nuisance is another person's poison. So would it not be a random occurrence in the middle of the night, families and kids no longer have the access to, you know, to see nature at work on their walks during the day, and through relocation, we can manage this, and so that it's a win-win situation for all, so just really appreciate your consideration around that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I am not seeing any more speaker forms in front of me for in-person speakers, but would anyone in person like to speak that hasn't already? Seeing none. I will go to the online callers. We do have a few callers here, and so when I call your phone number, please, the IT department will unmute you, and so you'll have the opportunity to speak for five minutes as well. So we'll start with phone number ending in 079. Phone number ending in 079. Talking is now permitted, and you may speak. And if you wish not to speak, please let us know as well. Phone number ending in 079. You may speak now. All right, we're going to move on to the next caller. This is a phone number ending in 630. Phone number ending in 630. Talking is now permitted, and you may speak. Go ahead, caller with phone number ending in 630. I see your hand is up, so you may go ahead and speak now. I'm going to try one more time. Caller with phone number ending in 630, go ahead, please. Okay, so unfortunately, caller, we are not able to hear you for some reason, but we would still love to hear from you, so feel free to send the City Council an email with your thoughts. You may also give us a call as well after the meeting. I'd be happy to chat with you anytime. We'd love to hear from you. Unfortunately, the connection is not coming through at this time, but definitely want to hear your thoughts tomorrow. Okay, looks like the other callers dropped off, so I'm not seeing any more callers online, nor am I seeing any more in-person speakers, so with that, we will close public input. And as you all, for some of you, it may be your first meeting tonight at public comments, so City Council was taking notes of your comments, and City staff was as well, and so we're hoping to have, you know, if possible, someone from Council or someone from City staff will be following up with you with your particular concerns. But we do have to move forward now in the agenda to the consent agenda. This includes several items, including Item A, July 15, 2025, City Council Meeting Minutes; Item B, July 22, 2025, City Council Workshop Summary; Item C, Second Reading of Ordinance Number 11, Series 2025, Rezoning Certain City-Owned Real Property Legally Described as Lot 1A, Westbridge Filing Number 1, Replat A in the City of Lafayette for the Transitional Business T1 Zone District to the Public Zone District as amended with the condition to limit building height to 27 feet. Item B, Second Reading of Ordinance Number 14, Series 2025, Authorizing the Sale of Certain City-Owned Real Property Legally Described as Lot 1A, Westbridge Filing, Lot 1A, Replat A in the City of Lafayette to the Town of Erie. Item E, Resolution Number 2025/42, Supporting an Agreement Between Thor Nature Experience and the State Board of Great Outdoors Colorado Trust Fund for the Outdoor Programming of Youth to Benefit Nature Kids. Item F, Contract with A-Z Recreation LLC Playground Equipment Replacement. Item G, Change Order Number 1, MCCI Government Building Development Solution Implementation Contract. Item H, Change Order Number 2, NG Companies On-Call Engineering Services. Item I, Change Order Number 3, American Company Water Reclamation Facility Construction Phase Services. And Item J, Change Order Number 10, RN Civil Construction LLC Water Reclamation Facility Improvement Project. What is the Council's pleasure? Any items?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Your second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, moving forward, this is presentations. This is beginning with Item K. This is the 2025 Running for City Council video. It is an election year, and I believe packets released today.
Yes, so this is the second time we have produced a video for potential candidates, and so we just wanted to preview it, and as you mentioned, we now have packets available and open through the 25th of this month, and so interested candidates can reach out to our city clerk. There's a whole information website at the end of this video, and we're just excited to share it with you and for potential candidates. Thank you.
Welcome to the vibrant city of Lafayette, where the voice of our residents matter. Have you ever thought about making a difference in your community? Serving on City Council is a remarkable opportunity to shape the future of Lafayette and serve as a driving force for positive change. So how do you become part of the City Council? Let's take a closer look at the process. City Council serves as the legislative body of the city of Lafayette. To be eligible, you must be a Lafayette resident for at least one year prior to the election and remain a resident throughout your time in office. You also need to be a registered voter in the city and not in default to the city of Lafayette or any other governmental entity of the state of Colorado.
Serving on the City Council requires commitment to our community and a genuine desire to contribute, and I'll say that regardless of any municipal experience or participation you may have had, as long as you have ideas and the ability to listen and a passion for the community, you'll do a great job. Each counselor brings their own life experiences and passions to the conversation toward building consensus.
Lafayette City Council is comprised of seven members elected at large. Elections are held every two years, with counselors serving either two- or four-year terms based on the number of votes received. At the beginning of each two-year cycle, City Council appoints a mayor who presides open meetings and a mayor pro tem who acts in the mayor's absence. City Council meetings are typically held on the first and third Tuesday evenings of each month. These meetings provide a platform for conducting business and making informed decisions for the betterment of our community. Additionally, monthly workshops are conducted on the fourth Tuesday of the month to allow a forum for more open discussions and the exchange of ideas. Lafayette City Council plays a vital role in our city's governance, but it does not handle day-to-day operations or directly implement policies. Council appoints a city attorney, municipal judge, and a city manager who ensure that the council's vision is executed effectively and essential city services are provided that meet the needs of all residents. City Council also approves the annual budget and some land use decisions, adopts ordinances that amend or add to the city's municipal code, provides policy direction to city staff, and represents the city on regional boards and committees. The Lafayette City Council is the embodiment of our collective power to shape a successful tomorrow. Your voice matters, and we invite you to be part of the journey. Join us in making a difference and building a strong and vibrant Lafayette. To run for City Council, you must collect a petition from the city clerk's office and gather at least 25 signatures from registered electors in Lafayette. Together, let's create a brighter future for our city.
Yes, thank you to Director Willmott for putting that together.
Yeah, good video. I didn't know if you had more to that, or does it? Great, well, that was an awesome video. As previously mentioned, you know, folks are interested in running. You are now eligible to do so, so stop by City Hall, pick up a packet from Clerk Beck, and get those 25 signatures from eligible electors within the city of Lafayette, and then you'll be on the ballot, and then it's campaigning time, so best of luck to everyone in that upcoming race. All right, our next presentation for tonight is Item L. This is the Board, Commission, and Committee Term Lengths and Limits. If Council recalls, we did have a, begin this discussion earlier this year, and City staff and councilors have the opportunity to reach out to their committees to determine, you know, their thoughts on term lengths and limits, and so we have some updates from our Assistant to the City Manager, Alex Nelson, here.
Wonderful. Thank you for that introduction, Mayor. As mentioned, I have a brief presentation for you tonight regarding some feedback that we captured from our boards, commissions, and committees regarding potential term lengths and limits. This has been an ongoing discussion, so as mentioned, I'll keep it brief, but we'll provide a quick background on what led us to this point, summarize the feedback that we heard, and then turn it over to City Council for discussion and potential direction. So by way of background, as you'll recall, this has really been an ongoing conversation for about 18 months now, give or take, and what began general conversations around improvements to our board and commission program. And so that looked at, about this time last year, we were looking at changes to the scope of our boards and commissions to align them with current practices, as well as some name updates to align and improve consistency across our boards, the city. At that time, we also adjusted our terms to all end on November 30 of each year and then begin on December 1 of each year, and transitioned to a semi-annual recruitment process. We're about to kick off our second primary recruitment process at the end of this month, and then at a new ideas discussion during a workshop, a question about term limits came up, which prompted a larger discussion with Council about alternates, term lengths, and term limits of our boards and commissions. So at that time, the direction we heard from Council was to remove the alternates from our boards and commissions that had them, and then engage boards and commissions to understand their interest in potential term limits and improve and develop consistency regarding term lengths. So we asked our staff liaisons to go back with their boards and commissions and have discussions about these topics with them, and wanted to provide that feedback for you this evening. So what you see here is a summary table, kind of capturing the high-level feedback we heard from our boards and commissions regarding these two topics. There's a bit more information in your packet, but generally, what you're looking at is the boards and commissions that were engaged on the left side, and then the center column is the feedback we heard about term lengths, and then the column on the right is looking at feedback that, what we heard about term limits. And so regarding term lengths, we did generally hear some consensus to not really change much of what we're currently doing, which would maintain kind of inconsistent term lengths. As you'll see, we have everywhere from one-year terms for our youth advisory board up to four years for our historic preservation commission and planning commission, and then a number sitting at the three-year mark with, and then SRAV, our sustainability and resilience advisory board, is sitting at two-year terms. That said, with the variety there, the general consensus was to maintain what is currently in practice. The term limits feedback was a bit more of a mixed bag, so I will just walk through kind of what we heard from the boards here, and so regarding our cultural arts board, which includes our public arts subcommittee, there was mixed feedback on term limits and no consensus there. We did hear from two members of our historic preservation commission, they weren't able to meet and have a full board discussion, but we did hear and get feedback from two members that there was no desire for term limits there. We heard from our human rights board and library board that they would be supportive of term limits if they were consistent across the city. Our open space advisory board and planning commission indicated no desire for term limits. The senior advisory board did not reach consensus on the matter. Sustainability and resilience advisory board wishes to keep what they're doing, and interestingly, they are the only board that currently does have term limits, as you'll recall. And then finally, our youth advisory board is not interested in term limits at this time. So before I turn it over to Council for any discussion of potential direction regarding term lengths and limits, I do just want to summarize some next steps. As mentioned, we heard from the last discussion at one of your workshops, I believe back in May, support for providing consistency in terms of alternates and removing alternates from boards that currently have them and potentially adjusting some of the number of members on those boards. And so what we're planning to do currently is return to you likely in September with an ordinance for your consideration that would do a number of things, beginning by removing the alternates for the historic preservation commission but maintaining their seven regular members, removing alternates for the open space advisory board but increasing their membership from five regular members to seven regular members, removing alternates from the senior advisory board but maintaining their regular members, and then removing alternates from the sustainability and resilience advisory board and maintaining their nine regular members. And not all of these boards currently have seated alternates, but the one concern we heard about this was what would happen to those members who are currently appointed alternates, and so we consulted with our city attorney's office and could include some language in the ordinance that would effectively recognize anyone who's currently appointed as an alternate until they resign either, whether it's, or their term ends, whether it's to fill a regular seat or they resign at their own decision. And then, of course, in that ordinance, we would include any other direction that is provided by Council tonight. So with that, I will turn it over to the Mayor and Council to see if there's any direction about implementing consistent term lengths or limits for our boards and commissions.
Thank you. Would you mind going back a couple of slides just to the summary of each board's response? Thank you. And for Council as well, for your reference, if you'd like to look at page 105 in your packet, it's there as well. So I guess we'll first, we'll just start with questions to see if there are any questions from City Staff at all regarding this. Counselor Sampson.
And this is also for Council. I thought we talked about the sustainability and resilience advisory board would go to seven members versus nine. Did I, am I, oh, I got one head shake, so I'm not crazy. Thanks.
I don't know if we got to a, yeah, I'll jump in, because I remember the conversation. I don't think we ever hit a number, but we talked about consistency, maybe limiting at all boards across the table. I think it was nine, something like that. Again, I don't remember the number. The conversation definitely happened.
Thank you.
Yes, we did decide on that, though, right? If I'm remembering correctly, it's nine?
Then no more than nine?
No more than nine. We did, but we did agree to that.
That's why I can't remember, so.
We did. I'm sorry.
The maximum of nine.
Yeah.
You said no more than nine.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, so again?
One quick question, sorry. The only thing we're not allowed to change because of the charter is the length of the planning commission. Everything else, both on term limits and term length, can be changed, correct?
Is in code, it could be altered with, pardon.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess it really is, you know, now we can just open it up to a council discussion on where we want to go from here. I mean, if you just look at the summary of the chart, I mean, let's just start with the term lengths. The term lengths, it looks like every board either has no preference or prefers no change, and then for historic preservation, they mentioned might deter applicants. For term limits, it looks like that's more of a mixed bag, and so maybe we take it piece by piece. And so, maybe we, maybe we take it piece by piece. We start with term lengths to see if that's something council wants to pursue. If so, should we be consistent for all boards or specific boards? Or make no changes at all? What are our thoughts? Counselor Barnes?
Just a point of clarification, the four-year term might deter applicants of the human preservation, historic preservation commission. Is it, so four years is too long or too short?
Yeah, this was, this was, historic preservation commission was one that couldn't have the full board discussion, so this just came in via email, and that was my interpretation from this, was that the four-year term might, might deter applicants due to its length and being too long.
Oh, okay, okay. Just, thank you.
Yep.
So, where does, where does council want to take the discussion? Or I just want to hear your thoughts and opinions. You know, we could, we could talk about both, or we could just start with term lengths. Just, what are your thoughts? Where, where do you want to go? Counselor Sampson.
I propose three-year term lengths. The only question I have is the youth advisory board. Is it possible to increase their term lengths? With the idea that, you know, you're, you're appointing somebody, you're approving somebody, and then they don't have to reapply. The difficulty, I think, would be, I'm trying to think of school years. Three years works really good for those in middle school or junior high, but then you get into high school.
Just a quick point of clarification, so in parentheses, that's, that's where they currently are, right?
Yes.
So, so if, with, with your recommendation, Counselor Sampson, the ones that would see the change would be open space going from four to three, planning going from four to three?
No, planning is charter.
Charter, sorry. And then, sorry, sustainability going up a year, and youth advisory going up two years.
And historic preservation going down a year.
Oh, yes, and now as well.
Yeah, I just picked something in the middle that.
Okay. Counselor Barnes?
Counselor Gallegos. So, we did have this conversation with the youth advisory board, and they have no desire to go beyond two. I think even two is a stretch if you have an older high school student who's interested, because then, once they're a senior, they would realistically age out. So then we're deterring older youth from participating. Also, this could not go into effect this fall because the current members applied for a one-year term, and they've already been selected for recommendation.
Yeah, they could get a little tricky with the youth advisory board. Were you going to mention something, Counselor Barnes?
I think maybe Counselor Freeland, if I remember correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, but sustainability and resilience advisory board, if they were to go to three-year terms, it might limit how many people get involved.
I'm not sure. I don't think that's a huge change. I do think they, they do like the current setup, I think. It's still fairly new, and so, you know, I think, I think moving them from two to three years would not necessarily lead to huge disruptions for them. But, you know, six, you know, if we did have like term limits or something, six years is a pretty long time, so four years seems, two, two-year terms or something is, I think something people could sign up for, and they just don't know six years. But, I think it's still okay probably for them.
Counselor Barnes? Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to add, I think for the senior advisory board, there's a, I think a need for institutional knowledge in the board, and they're, they're at four years. If I remember correctly, is it four or three? Three. So, I think shorter than three would not really work that well, so, so that they're building up, if people aren't on there for three years, they can share with people who have just gotten on there. It takes a while for people to understand the mechanism that they're in and also how the city functions. And I guess I'm seeing, like the youth advisory board, I can't see bringing them more than, I can't see extending the time of their term, their term length. I can't see making it more than a year, but I also don't see taking the senior advisory board down to two years. I think it would be difficult to have the same number of years for each one of the boards and commissions, the exact same term length.
Thoughts from others? Counselor Freeland?
So, I think I agree with the youth advisory board comment, that one year is probably, it gives us the most flexibility, so we can meet each kid where they are. If they're a senior, they want to come in, give them a year. If they're young, they just want to try it, give them a year, you know, and that they, they can keep going, which is of value to us. I think I'm kind of split on this, to be honest. Like, I really, like, looking at those different years, like, is really disharmonious. I don't know if that's the right word, but like, it's just, it's crazy. Like, why do we have so many years? It's ridiculous.
I think it's harmonious.
Yeah, not, it's not harmonious, right? Yeah. Uncomfortable.
Discordant.
Oh, yeah, discordant, there we go. But also, you know, I come back to kind of the, the thinking of like, is it broken? If it is, maybe we should fix it, but is it broken? I'm not sure. So, I, I think I, I'm leaning towards, let's make it consistent, because that feels a lot better. But also, you know, a lot of these folks are really, really bought into what they're doing, and, you know, I don't know if, if that, like, that trying to feel more comfortable in it is worth their disruption, if that makes sense. So, I think that's where I am.
Okay. Counselor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. Also, when you think, when we think about it, the number of times that they meet in one year is fewer than, what's it, 12? Eleven times, because they don't meet typically in December. And that's hard to get, it's hard to accomplish a lot when you're meeting once a month. I, I just listened to, ask Rab what they were trying to work on, and, you know, they almost need to meet twice a month in order to get everything accomplished. So, I, I think the term limits, maybe the term limits question is more of what I think we should consider versus the term length.
Yeah, can you help me understand that connection? I'm not sure.
Oh, yeah. So, term limits, if we, if it does, if we do change the length, the term lengths, it might take longer to accomplish the desired outcomes. So, removing term limits and allowing people to come on over and over again could still allow them to finish, because what we do want them to do is finish their, what they're working on, and it might take longer to do so if we were to, if we do change the term lengths to say, two years, not, not putting a limit on how many times they could be on. That's kind of what I'm thinking of. It's just a thought, it's not like, okay, just to throw it out there.
Any other thoughts, opinions? Counselor Tapi Vega?
I have this beautiful dream, this beautiful harmonious dream, standardization across everything, where it's easy to just kind of know, this is, this is it. Two years is what I was originally going for, but, but I hear your argument for institutional knowledge, and I think that's really an important one. So, I think three years is the perfect, three years is where I'd go.
Okay. Counselor Gallegos?
I would suggest we keep term limits as in, as is, because most prefer no change, and talk about the possibility of no more than three terms. I think two would be too short for some of the boards, given their term length, but no more than three.
So, you're saying three term limits? So, so if youth advisory board is only one year, they, they're maxing out at three years? Okay, I don't want to clarify.
And Counselor Barnes, just to clarify as well, you're sort of, would you rather, like, we don't need to decide on term limit, lengths, and then go to limits, but I just wanted to have that conversation first. But you're more interested in exploring the term limit, term limits, and that will kind of dictate how you feel about the term lengths?
I guess, sorry, to clarify, I was in favor of term limits initially, and then listening to other councilors and the members of the boards, I, the institutional knowledge piece, I think it's so important that, I guess my biggest concern is having term limits. But term lengths, that one, I'm not, I'm, I'm okay with.
Oh, you're open-minded?
Yeah.
With the term. To, to, to three years?
Sure.
Okay. Mayor Portimong? Just, I want to make sure I could get a consensus here, so.
I'm very comfortable with whatever council desires.
So, I am seeing a consensus for three-year, three-year limits, but does council want to make an exception?
Either term lengths or limits?
Sorry, my apologies. Term lengths, three-year term lengths. And, but does council want to make an, an exception for the youth advisory board because of their unique situation, working with kids and graduation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm good with, yeah, that's a, yeah, they're dealing with different timeframes.
Right. Okay. So, three years for all boards and commissions.
Minus.
Excluding the Lafayette Youth Advisory Board, which will continue their, their current structure of one year, as well as the planning commission, which will continue their current structure of four years.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Moving on. Term limits, this looks like it had more of a, some boards expressed no desire for any limits, some were supportive of, of limitations, but ultimately, council makes that decision. So, what are our thoughts on term limits? Counselor Sampson?
So, I'm going to make a similar recommendation, three term limits. And I understand institutional knowledge, but I happen to know, I've seen the other side, which is, one, we have somebody who's there, has been on a board for more than 10 years, and I don't see the energy. I don't see, you know what I mean? It's sort of like, this is what I do, so I'm just going to keep doing it. And I've also heard from somebody on a board who was there and just felt like they literally, they were voted in, and then the committee said, well, you're so great, we're just going to recommend you just keep going. And the person ended up like six months later going, I got to get out of here. I feel like I can never get out. So, it was, it was, it's kind of like sitting on an HOA board, you can never leave, you know?
Of course, it's the council.
Yeah. You can just never go away. So, I want to give people some outs, if that makes sense. I still think if it was three ter, you know, if you've got three-year terms, and then you can only do three, three-year terms, you still come up to nine years. And so you have, you're, you're able to get the institutional knowledge, but also make sure you're bringing in fresh ideas.
And these are consecutive?
Yes, yes.
So, do we need to address the not consecutive?
Yes, but later. Counselor Freeland?
The way that it's written in the S.RAB ordinance, I guess, is you have to take at least a two-year break, and then you can come back. So, we could do similar, anyway, for later. So, I'm, I'm certainly, as a concept, very supportive of term limits. I agree with you. You just get stuck, and it's not healthy, and it's good for everybody to like have the ideas and the people flowing through the system and having different kind of roles. I do have a question, though. Would, I'm a little worried if term limits could hurt any of these boards if they have a low demand for, for spots. I don't think that's the case right now, but I know that we've had that in the past.
So, I do believe it could impact certain boards. I guess we'll start with the previous exception, which is the youth advisory board. That one in particular, so that's a board where you're eligible to join it with, when you're a sixth grader, I believe, all the way up until the 12th grade, so that would be six years of a service, and that's something, you know, I, I can speak from personal experience. I joined, I believe, my eighth grade year and continued all the way to 12th grade, so that was five years I served on that board, and it genuinely is the reason why I stayed out of a lot of trouble and why I got so involved in the community. So, I think it could be a good extracurricular. Obviously, it's good for building college resumes and in-job resumes and things like that, but at the same time, it is a, it is, it can be, you know, a place of, of service and protection for, for our, our youth here in the community. But that's more of a, you know, personal statement rather than what you were describing earlier, which is, I believe, I've, I've heard from the senior advisory board, and correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor Barnes, but they seem to have a lack of membership, and so, already, in their, they have, they struggle with filling seats, and so, term, or limiting them, you know, could prevent them from even having enough applicants for a quorum regularly, if you're taking out some of the more tenured members.
I, if I may, that definitely was an issue, and recently, there has been a clear change in the interest of being on that board and the focus on ensuring that there's a broad spectrum of people who are recruited to be on that board, understanding that it's not just, you know, a limited number of issues that are addressed and things that they comment on. So, I think the current changes that have happened with the senior advisory board are sustainable, and I, of course, that could change in, in the future, but I think the problems of the past have been addressed. Yeah, so I don't think it'll be a problem with the senior advisory board moving forward.
Isn't that one of the things that could happen to any board? I mean, you're going to cycle through. When I first started on council, historic preservation commission was a really strong group, had lots of people trying to apply. Now, they're, they're worried because, you know, they don't have as many. So, even if you look back two years ago, and we were worried about the senior advisory board, it's going to roll. I mean, you're going to have that in each, and it's, I think, one, providing some consistency here, making sure, you know, now that we've got this as, you know, people, as somebody who has applied for those boards in the past, I never knew when I was supposed to apply, but now we've got this, okay, it happens twice a year, it's very, it's advertised. The more clear we are, the more broadly we promote and talk to people about opportunities. I don't know that, I think that's really what's going to keep us from having problems of vacancies versus whether or not there's a term limit.
Thank you. Counselor Freeland?
So, the other thing, I appreciate that point very much. That was very compelling. The other thing I would say is, I mean, nine years is a long time. Three, three-year terms is a long time. You know, having it be two, two, two-term limits, two terms, limit, a limit of two terms, is going to hurt us even more, maybe, in the losing institutional knowledge, but I just offer it as a kind of a counterpoint to your three. I don't know if I feel strongly either way, but nine years is a really, quite a long time. So, anyway.
But they can always step down.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Yeah.
Fair point, yeah. Counselor Gallegos?
So, there are several members on library board specifically who have served more than six years, and I asked, would you be sad if this was your last year? And so many of them would be upset, and I do worry about losing that institutional knowledge from the people who have served such a long time, who have seen the library changes, and then I worry about the number of people and the number of applications we have to replace them.
Is it, do you have a lot for libraries?
It's probably 80%, I think, just one or two are new.
So, not many new applications or, or a lot of new applications?
I'm sorry, I thought we were talking about members. So, applications, I do think, thanks to the new recruiting process, we received more than previous cycles.
Good.
But I do think losing that many people at one time would be detrimental to this board.
And so, would you be in favor of, of no term limits or staying as is, or, or larger, longer-term limits, your overall preference? Or would we take it on a, or by board basis? What would be your, what would be your opinion?
So, I had originally suggested no more than three, three-year terms, but I do like the process of no term limits.
Okay. Thank you. Thoughts from other councilors? Counselor Tapi Vega?
Three terms.
Three terms.
Okay, three terms, three years apiece.
Yep.
What do you think about youth advisory?
What do I think about youth advisory? I think that's the one that we don't really change. I think it is the way that it is. My only question for the rest of you, actually, is planning commission. If we do three terms, that goes to 12 years.
Um, so the charter requires four terms?
Yeah.
And so we'd have to go to the people to make any change?
Four years requires four-year terms.
Oh, yeah, four-year terms.
Term limit for the, yeah, term limit.
What is in the charter?
It would be 12.
Is there any?
I don't think there's a term.
I don't believe there's a term limit for planning commissioners, just their length of terms is set by charter.
Yeah. And 12 years, I mean, that's, that's planned.
So Mayor Potemong, what made you leave planning commission?
My term expired.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And, uh, but I feel like that is a considerable, I mean, that's longer than we have on city council.
And are we talking about, do we just talk about consecutive terms, right? We're not talking about non-consecutive terms?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what you're saying is you're concerned that it's 12 years on planning commission?
But we can't change planning commission, right?
The term limits.
We can change the term limits.
Term limits.
As opposed to three, we could do two, that'd be eight years total, that's the same as city council. But I'm fine with 12.
There's a section in the charter for planning commission specifically related to the lengths. There's a separate section in the code that outlines more of the details of what their process is, when they meet, how many members, et cetera, and that's where you could update it to include.
So we could have term limits on the planning commission?
I don't know that there's anybody who's ever wanted to sit on planning commission for 12 years.
12 years?
Actually, it's about Mr. Phillips.
Oh, yeah, he.
Because Frank's did eight years, and then I think city council.
He took a break.
And he's back. That's why I asked the consecutive term question.
Non-consecutive, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you could take a, yeah.
He's a glutton for punishment.
And so if we do, okay, so, um, and then, did you have any, uh, Mayor Potemong, do you have any thoughts on term limits?
No, I mean, I think, I think this has been a good discussion, and if that's what the group wants to go with three, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm supportive of three terms as a limit, except for youth advisory board.
Okay.
And I would want just some mechanism, and I think we're, we have it of like, if a board is like really lagging and this becomes an issue, just, let's just talk about it and help them.
So I'm hearing from four councils, or at least four councilors. Um, I would say, yeah, a majority consensus. Uh, oh, were you going to add something?
Uh, just a point of clarification, so we're not talking about non-consecutive terms. But is there anything in our charter that's, that covers that, uh, consecutive? Like, like for SRAV, you have to wait, what, two years before you can apply again? If I get that right. There's nothing in our charter that specifies that's generally the, you have to wait a certain amount of time before you can reapply. Like for council, you have to wait four years before you can.
Not for boards and commissions, no.
So there's nothing, okay.
So, but we would have to probably, we would have to establish that, I feel like, tonight, then. Um, we, so for city council, it is four years. Okay.
Wait, you're talking about term lengths? It's four years or two years?
Uh, I, no, no, no. We were.
Time between.
Time in between terms.
Right, four, yes, four years.
So if you run for council, you win eight years, you serve on council, you could take a four-year break, and then serve for another eight years.
That is correct.
Okay. All right, all right, so I'm, let me just, uh, share what I'm hearing so far in terms of, of the term limits. Term limits, I'm hearing a majority consensus for three terms, with the exception of the youth advisory board, uh, to, to keep as is. Okay? And so that would mean, with that decision, that all the boards minus youth advisory would follow a three-year length term, um, for a maximum of three consecutive terms, so a total of nine years, but for the planning commission, it would be 12 years. Okay? And then, now, we need to decide, uh, on the break between, uh, boards.
Uh, I don't know if we necessarily, I think if you, if you're breaking the, the, the three-year term, it's just a break in three-year terms. I, I see it as one break, just like city council's one break from one election cycle, essentially. I mean, it's a little bit, for those people who only need two-year terms, it's a little bit less. But I think, let's not make it too complicated, let's just keep it simple, like, hey, if you were on this board for three years, and that's its normal term, then great, you take a time off and you come back. Planning commission could be four years, because their terms are four years. You take four years off, you go back. So, I don't know, I don't, I don't see that as a complex issue that we would need to address.
I know, but are you sug, so are you suggesting, once you serve three consecutive terms, like you serve a total of nine years, let's say, on open space, right? You serve a total of nine years on open space, then you would have to take a three-year break before you can run again, or be appointed again?
Or bounce to a different board.
There's that as well.
Which is fine.
So if you've been on library board, we are going to introduce you to the vacancies on our other boards.
Exactly, that's why.
So, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying.
So a three-year wait for boards that have a three-year term. So not necessarily a three-year wait, but, but the, uh, duration of, of the, the length.
The one term.
The one term, yes. I mean, that seems pretty standard. That's what I was going to suggest, I just wanted to make sure we were on the same page on that, you know?
I mean, it is kind of a long time to wait if somebody wants to come back, and they are approved by their peers on that board, and then approved by us. I mean, I, I almost feel like a year is sufficient. If somebody wants to come back in a year, I mean, they must be awesome, and really care about serving the community. I don't know.
There's also public comment, so they can come back and make public comment.
They could certainly come back and make public comment. Yeah, I just feel like maybe having, like, three or four years to, that we mandate they wait is kind of, it's a little heavy-handed by us, you know what I mean? In that, like, after a year, you've decided you want to come back, who are we to tell them that they shouldn't put their name back in the hat?
So you're kind of aligning that with the, you have to be, uh, a resident of Lafayette for 12 months prior to applying for a board, so you're kind of saying the same thing.
It's kind of similar, yeah. Yeah, take a cool-off period of at least 12 months. Cool-off period.
I mean, but would you feel the same way, let's say, for city council, then? Because city council, there's a reason why we have a break. I don't know why, what the reason is, but, right, maybe people need a change, I guess?
I think that's in charter, right?
Yeah.
Charter or even state law? Is it just charter? Four-year wait for city council?
I'm looking, I am looking for that right now. Not our term limits.
It's okay. So, so Council Tapia Vega?
I hear what you're saying, uh, Council Freedland. But the, the point also is, if they want to come back and they're termed, it means they've done at least nine years on a board. So I think waiting one term out is enough. And especially if they have to, like, if they do the three terms on planning commission, and they want to come back, they should, they've done 12 years, at that point, they should probably wait out the four years. So I'm totally fine with them waiting out one term, like, like, that's, I think that's perfect. I hear what you're saying, but if they're termed, they've done, they've done.
They've done a lot of time.
They've done a lot, yeah.
Yeah. It, it's hard for me to imagine anyone that will be in this scenario after giving 10 years of their life, or 12 years of their life, and then coming back after a year, I guess. So I'm not, I don't, hold up, this is not a strong, a strong opinion, but it just feels a little heavy-handed.
Okay. Um, how do others feel? Are you supportive of Council Freedland's proposal of one-year wait? Or are you supportive of Mayor Potemong Wong's proposal of a, of a full term? I just want to make sure we get a consensus, so we can, so city staff knows where we landed.
I was going to say, I'm not, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I was going to say, we are going to put limits on it. I think it would be prudent to follow that up with, you need to wait a term to give somebody else a chance to do it.
Okay, thank you.
So that we move people through.
I was going to say, I, it doesn't matter to me, as long as when we put the term limits in, we say consecutive. Because that, yeah, because what if somebody comes in here, joins a board, moves away for work, comes back? I wouldn't know anybody even sitting on here that has done that. And comes back, they should be able to go right away into applying again.
Okay, so, uh, to clarify, because that definitely can happen. So let's say you take someone on the library board, they serve six years, leave, come back. Uh, let's say they come back five years later.
Yeah.
Then they can, can they serve a consecutive nine years again?
That's what I would say.
Or however long. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Are there any disagreements or issues with serving a full term?
A term break?
A term break, sorry, a full-term break?
So just a clarity question about those that were previously alternate members. Does that count towards the term?
Okay, I guess that's the next discussion, then we'll, we.
Especially on the library board, because they didn't, they just totally ignored whether they were alternates.
Okay, so.
They all just voted.
So let's, let's finish this discussion, and then that's, we transition to the next part. Okay, so this, for, so for staff's clarification, to clarify, council has consensus, uh, in terms of the breaks between terms, uh, to be a, a full-term length, however many that may be for, for each specific board. Okay? And then I think to wrap up, we, this discussion, uh, we need to talk about current members serving. So currently, and I think you mentioned this already, but just, just for clarification, because I'm, I don't remember, I'm confused, too, is that if you are, for example, you are currently on the human rights board, you are two years into your current term, uh, where, how, how do these changes affect you?
It's a good question. Certainly some implementation we'll have to figure out with our city attorney's office. Our initial brainstorm was to make this effective just moving forward. But because this would be an ordinance, it would effectively be up to council on how we draft the language.
So a quick question, based on that, that would mean it would affect every board except for youth advisory board, correct? So we are kind of exempting them?
Yes.
From this, okay.
Yes, but not retroactively looking at how long people have served already, just moving forward.
Okay.
So, so staff, we need some time to go back and look how this may impact us, or impact those, those currents, currently serving.
Yeah.
Come back to us for our first reading, and then we can kind of pick apart the language at that first reading?
That is an approach, yeah. With this direction, we could, we could now map out what this would look like and present that.
It is an approach, but what does staff like, who would make staff lives easier?
What I believe we were trying to say is that, so if you've served, you know, nine years already, and you're working during recruitment here soon, right? Um, coming up on this next appointment, that starts your day one. You don't really count the nine years. That would be the cleanest way, but we could also present an option that shows if you've done your nine years on planning commission, you only get one more three-year, or, or four-year term, right? Like, we can present some options, so that we don't spin wheels now, not having all the full list of alternates right now.
And that would include alternates as well, just everybody on one. Um, what would council prefer?
It's a choice, for sure.
Clean, fresh start, uh, whenever this takes into effect, the year from now or wherever? And then everyone's kind of eligible for a full nine? What, what would you, what would you say?
So there's, if we don't do it, the clean break of just day one, the new terms, there's too many, you know, different scenarios.
Yeah.
It would just become extremely complicated. And so I think, I think that's the simplest way, um, to, to do it. Even, even though we might have people who've served for 10 years, and then can now serve for another nine, so it kind of goes against what we're, what we're trying to push here.
Yeah, it's on us.
It is what it is, you know? And I think it's, it's too, it's too complicated otherwise.
Okay, Council Sampson, were you going to say something?
No, I had asked a question regarding, well, let me, let me ask the question outright. When are we going to start taking applications for the boards?
August 25th.
Okay, so I feel like, I feel like, what, could we, could we get, would we be able to get back to council on the 19th with, how many would be hitting their, their nine or 12 years? Well, yeah.
We, we could, if we, if we choose to go that path, but what would, what is your thoughts, Council Sampson?
I hate to start it afresh, um, because let's say somebody is on for nine years, then, then they can go another nine years. They're on for 18 years, and that, that the whole, sort of defeats the whole purpose of what's going on. But there might be a, there might be some sort of in-between that says, okay, if you've been on nine years, we're going to grant you the option to do one more term. You know, we might be able to say that, that at this time, rather than just grandfathering everybody in.
Yeah, I mean, but if you think about it now, they already have no term limits in some of them. But we, we just had a discussion, like, who's going to serve for 18 years? Is anyone going to really do that?
Well, that's why I was asking the question of, could we find that information out before the 19th, so that?
Just to see how many.
Well, because we do need to tell these individuals, if there are some. I, I think there's one. Just because I have visited a lot of boards, and so, I think there's only one that might have to bounce to something else.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think there's many.
Okay.
But I want to give, I want them to know ahead of time, to say, hey, guess what? You've been, you've already been on X amount of years, we, and we have the option then to decide. Could we give them one more term, or do we say to those individuals, okay, this would be the end, but here are the other options, the vacancies, the other boards that have vacancies?
Um, so we need to come to a consensus here, so we can move on to the next topic. Um, but it looks like, uh, so right now, Council Freedland's supportive of the idea of everyone getting, uh, the same starting point all at once, uh, at the next upcoming, uh, appointment cycle. Uh, Council Sampson's bringing, uh, the thought of, of doing it on a sort of, uh, not grandfathering in everyone and doing it, if you, if you had already been serving, those years would count towards your, your nine, or whatever the maximum is. However, there are seven of us, so we need to come to a consensus with how the rest of you feel. Mayor Potemong?
I would like to see what the data shows us. So if we can see the data, I think that'd be, I'd be interested in seeing that. And I think making a decision in a vacuum without data is a very informed decision.
Okay.
That's what I like to do. Thank you, Mayor.
I'll jump in, I agree, I want to see the numbers and how long people have been serving.
Okay.
Council Barnes?
Sure, sure, let's see the numbers. I like numbers.
I'm in agreement, I'd like to see the numbers. I only know the specifics of one board.
Okay, so I'm hearing a consensus, okay, so just so staff, I want to make sure class, staff is, is clear, so, um, because I'm not.
Do you want me to repeat it back?
Please.
Term length, term lengths, three years, except for the planning commissions, four, youth advisors, one. Term limits, three years, um, or three terms, sorry. Um, that would put most of the boards at nine years total. Planning commission would be 12, youth advisor would be three. We would have then a waiting period of your term length. So planning commission, that'd be four years wait, youth advisor, you need to wait one year, all the rest, three years. And then we will come back with data on the 19th to, um, outline our current board members and how many years they have served, and how this might affect alternates, um, which is good timing. You guys do not need to have the code necessarily in place when we start recruitment, but have at least that knowledge. So when we do recruit, we can let them know that this is what it looks like moving forward. Did I miss any?
The only exception I thought was, I thought we were going to exempt youth advisory board from term, all of it.
From all, from.
Yeah, they stay as.
Great.
Yes.
Thank you for that clarification, yeah.
Um, and, um, so then, council, staff, next steps would be to reach out to the boards and, and survey them, and ask how long folks have been serving?
We will not, well, we don't need to survey them to ask, we have that information, so.
Or, yeah, sure. And then, and then you would come back to us at the next meeting, or?
Yep, we would ideally like to do that, so that we can get some direction that night, so that by the time we go on, um, on lease, um, re-lease, the packing information in the open house on, uh, August 25th, that we'll have some information to provide.
Okay.
Existing applicants, as well as new applicants, about what this looks like.
Okay.
And then bring an ordinance probably shortly thereafter, early September, have it really in place by the time you do your appointments.
Okay. Well, hopefully, front-loading all this work, uh, at this point, will make things easier, uh, down the road. I think that's the goal of this discussion. So thank you to, to council and to the city staff for, for taking the time to, uh, and energy to, to get all this information for us. And, uh, you know, once it's all solidified, I think we should be, hopefully, you know, good for the foreseeable future. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. So that will wrap up presentations for tonight, uh, which brings us to regular business. We have two items tonight, uh, beginning with item M. This is the 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report Overview. Okay, we have Morgan Walton here to get us started.
Good evening, mayor and city council. I am here tonight to introduce Janine Hathcock. She is the audit partner at our audit firm, I. Bailey. She's going to be walking you through all this information. I'll jump back at the end, we have recommended motion language, but I'll turn it over to her.
All right, thank you for having me tonight. Councilmember Barnes, I did hear that you love the numbers, so.
I love numbers.
Yes, so I perked up right in the back there when I heard that.
Bring them, yeah.
So yes, you have me tonight. Brittany was not able to make it, so I am here to present to you all the 2024 uh, financial statement audit for the city of Lafayette. All right, so we're going to go through the financial statement audit and then we'll go through the single audit packet. And then I will conclude with our required communications, um, by our professional standards. But before I jump into that, I first want to thank Morgan and the finance team, uh, for making, uh, this audit such a success this year. All right, to the audit report, uh, it is a clean unmodified opinion, best you can get. That's what everyone wants to know. So that's front and center on the slide there. Um, but taking you to the opinion, uh, the first paragraph is what was audited. So we have audited the financial statements of the city, some governmental activities, their business type activities, your aggregate, uh, discreetly presented component units. Each major fund, and the city has, uh, four of them, and the aggregate remaining fund information. So this is a total of eight opinions in this one document. The second paragraph is the opinion itself, um, unmodified, best you can get. We state that your financial statements are materially correct and presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Any other CPA firm, given the same set of information, would come to the same conclusion as we did. And we can say that because of what's in paragraph three, that is the basis for our opinion. So here we state that we have followed all of our applicable required, um, auditing standards. We were independent of the city and we met all of our ethical requirements and responsibilities. The fourth paragraph is what we call an emphasis of a matter paragraph. It's just information that we want to call out to the readers of the financial statements because we believe it's essential information. And this year the city has two of them. So we'll start with the first one on, uh, the first page of the opinion. This is a correction of an error, um, paragraph. So the city made a restatement to some previously, um, previously issued, uh, financial information for the Lafayette Urban Renewal Authority Fund or the LURA Fund. Um, and I'll get to that here in just a second on some more detail. Page two starts with our second emphasis of a matter paragraph. Yes, um, this one is the implementation of GASPIS or the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. They had a new requirement to implement, um, compensated absences. The city did that and so we went ahead and add that, added that information. It is important to note that neither one of those emphasis of a matter paragraphs impact our opinions whatsoever. All right, so continuing on page two, uh, discusses, discusses management's responsibilities. So management is responsible for the fair presentation of your financial statements. And then it discusses our responsibilities as your auditors. So we are responsible for conducting our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. And then we bullet out what that means on the opinion for you. Okay, uh, the third and fourth pages of the, um, opinion discusses some other matters. So the city's financial statements include other information, um, other than just the basic financial statements, which is what our opinion covers. Uh, so it does discuss, um, required supplementary information first. These are things like your management's discussion and analysis, your budget to actual schedules, uh, for your general fund and your pension schedules. Uh, we do very limited procedures over that information, so there's no opinion over that information. You also include supplementary information. Uh, these are your combining statements and your individual budgetary schedules. Uh, we do certain, um, procedures over that to where we can give to you, uh, what we call an in relation to opinion. So we can say that information is materially correct in relation to the financial statements as a whole. And then finally, you also have, um, uh, introductory and statistical information. That information is unaudited, so there is no opinion over that. And then the final, um, paragraph discusses some other reporting. Basically, this one says that we issued another, um, report in, uh, related to your internal controls of your financial state, or financial reporting. All right, to the numbers, council member Barnes, here we go. Uh, this is, uh, the summary of our, uh, net position that's presented in your MDA. I always like to take you to the MDA because it's the only place in your, uh, financial packet that you're going to see that comparative information. Um, you'll, I'll stay most of the time over here in this total column off to the right, but, uh, you can see here uh, your total net position was $482 million. This is essentially the equity of the city. There was, um, an increase of $20 million from the prior, prior year, primarily due to some timing of some accounting entries um, related to the, uh, property tax receivable. Um, last year it wasn't recorded, this year due to timing, it was recorded. There was also a decrease in some restricted cash investments and internal balances due to the continued, um, capital construction on your wa, water reclamation treatment facility. Your total capital assets did increase 22.8 million or six, almost six and a half percent. And this was due to an increase, um, in your street improvement programs. And that continued construction of the water reclamation project throughout 2024. You'll see here the, um, down in the net position, uh, you have 324 million, um, invest, net investment and capital assets. So it just shows the dedication to the, um, the city's, um, giving back to the community and their capital assets. All right, so here is the change in net position. These are going to be, this is going to be essentially your income statement. Um, so you were able to grow that net position by approximately 20 million, um, from the prior year. And you'll notice in the first two columns, they'll represent your governmental activities. Revenue, total revenues did decrease 1.2, uh, 1.1 million or 1.8% compared to the prior year. So fairly consistent with the prior year, $1 million to the city of Lafayette is fairly consistent. You'll notice your expenses also increased 4.8 million, uh, compared to the prior year, primarily due to just, um, some sizable capital project investments and, um, staffing and the continued commitment to operations. We are seeing that across the state of Colorado. Overall, your governmental activities, uh, were in excess, or revenues were in excess of its expenses. So, uh, you can see down at the bottom there, uh, the governmental activities contributed 6.5 million to the total net position. And your, oops, I'm sorry. On your business type activities, charges for service continue to be a stronghold for the city. Um, increased 7.6 million from the prior year, but it does represent 85.5% of that, uh, of that opinion unit. Um, here as well, you can see at the bottom, um, your business type activities did contribute, um, 13.7 million to the city's total net position. So very strong net position for the city. Um, this, um, slide I just put together, um, in case you don't want to read the entire financial statement and you get to the footnotes and you're falling asleep, these are the ones that we do, uh, recommend reading um, because we believe they are important to the users of your financial statements. Any questions on the financial statement audit?
Thank you. Uh, questions on the financial statement audit?
Okay, single audit. All right, so the single audit is a separate report. It's in the very, it's at, in the very bottom of the other financial statements, um, but it is a separate report that we provide. That, the package actually starts with two different auditor reports. On the first report on the financial, uh, statements, internal controls. This is a report, it is not an opinion. So the main takeaway from this report is that we do consider your controls for the planning and performing of our audit, but we don't test controls, so we don't express an opinion over internal controls. However, if we do come across anything that we identify as a significant deficiency or material weakness in internal controls, we do bring that to your attention. And we do have one material weakness in internal controls and it's related to that correction of an error. And I promise I will get to that in here in just a minute. Uh, the second page of the, um, this report is, um, the opinion and it's a report on our internal controls. So it's our opinion over your, um, compliance with the Office of Management and Budgets, compliance supplement for the major program that we tested. Um, we have an opinion over that program. It is an unmodified opinion, again, best you can get. And the opinion there is laid out very similar to what I went through with the financial statement opinion. And then that also includes a report on internal controls. Again, don't test internal controls, but we do bring to your attention if we find anything. Nothing was found for the single audit to report to you. I forgot to switch it, so that was, okay. So this is my favorite report, um, in the single audit report. So I know it's been a long night and you guys are all pretty tired. Uh, so if you don't remember anything I just said, this is the summary of the auditor's results. So at the very beginning, you'll see it's a financial statement audit. We have an unmodified opinion. We have a material weakness identified in internal controls. No significant deficiency and no noncompliance to report to you. And then we talk about our federal awards, uh, no material weakness, no significant deficiency and an unmodified opinion. So this, um, is in the single audit report. This is the finding. So what had happened was finance went out to the LURA group and, um, they were talking about, uh, some account balances out there and they noted that there was about $740,000 of accounts receivable that, or notes receivable that hadn't been recorded yet. And so based on their procedures, um, they found the error, um, they went ahead and booked it. It was material to that fund, so they did have to restate, but this is going back several years and I, I don't remember, is it 20? I mean, early 2000s? 2020. Um, so it was very old, um, but part of their procedures, they did find it. Um, so there was at some point a material weakness in internal controls and that's all this is about. And with that, I'll pause to see if you have any questions on the single audit before I get to my final letter, uh, to governance.
Questions on this portion of the presentation? No, okay.
All right, so the letter to governance is a separate, separate letter. Um, is not part of our opinions on financial statements or single audits. Um, but it just concludes our requirements to you as your auditors. And it's required by our professional standards, but essentially, um, the letter covers what's bulleted on this slide. So we say, we let you know that we did comply with our professional standards, including all of our ethical requirements. The city did update its significant accounting policies because of that new government accounting standards board standard on compensated absences. So they updated that. We call that out to you. We do call out all of those sensitive disclosures for you, so you didn't have to take notes on that slide that I gave you. They're all in that letter for you. And, uh, there was one corrected misstatement, which was the $740,000, um, for the LURA fund. And there was one uncorrected misstatement and that was just related to a prior year, um, entry that reversed in the current year. Um, and then we are happy to report there weren't any disagreements or significant difficulties with management during our audit. And that's all we have.
Great.
Thank you.
Uh, any final thoughts or questions? Well, I really appreciate all, all your work, um, and thank you for working with us. And it's, we're really proud to hear these results. Uh, really does speak volumes of our city staff and our work. And I'm sure, um, as we spoke earlier, you know, you did mention that this is not a city you worry about when you were doing this kind of work.
Exactly.
That makes us happy.
Me too.
Thank you so much, Janine. I'll go ahead. We do have motion language proposed, um, to accept the 2024 annual comprehensive financial report for council.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just make a quick comment, um, and thank, I don't know, not exactly sure who served on the audit committee, but thank you, um, for sitting on the audit committee. For somebody who sat on the audit committee, gosh, for three cycles, I think. Um, I really encourage those of you who have not had the opportunity to sit on the audit committee. It is a lot of numbers, but you learn so much about, um, the city and how the government works. So I would highly encourage it. I know that I joined the audit committee, um, when former councillor Bahana, um, was so excited about numbers. And, um, and I joined when she was still on council and so it was really an amazing experience. So, um, one of the words that I wish to leave as I get ready to depart council is that I do encourage any member who has the opportunity to sit on the audit committee, it's a great opportunity. So thank you to those of you who served, um, and then I encourage you, the rest of you, to do it at some point in time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, uh, this year was councillor Barnes and myself on that committee. And so next year, uh, you know, there'll be opportunities for lots of, lots of changes and new members on council as well. So we'll, we'll see who, who's able to take advantage of that opportunity in the future. Uh, any other thoughts or questions or comments? Councillor Barnes?
I guess I would like to say, uh, with the review, it's, it's really reassuring to know that we do have consistency. Is it continued consistency? I guess I'm just reading over a little bit. But, um, yeah, it's, it makes me smile. I, it was a really good numbers. And the fact that you can keep track of all of these bits and pieces and find something that happened, you know, in 2020 and address it straight away. I just, that's super impressive, so thank you for all your work.
Thank you, appreciate that.
All right, we'll take a motion if someone feels ready.
I move to accept the 2024 annual comprehensive financial report.
Second.
Motion and a seconding for their discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None opposed, that passes unanimously. Thank you so much. All right. We got one final item tonight for regular business. Uh, this is item N. Resolution number 2025 dash 43, establishing a sister city partnership with the city of Iquitos, Peru. And we have, uh, our assistant city manager, Alex Nelson, here to get us started.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Uh, as mentioned, I'm here to present an overview of resolution number 2025 43, which would establish a sister city partnership with the city of Iquitos, Peru. Um, I'll begin with a brief background of council discussions to date, highlight what's in the resolution before you this evening and then turn it over just with proposed motion language and see if there are any questions from council. So as a reminder, this concept began back in January at your, uh, city council workshop during the new ideas portion. The mayor brought forward the idea of implementing a sister city partnership and at that time received council support to explore, um, both cities and then potential nonprofit organizations that could help facilitate this relationship. So fast forward to June, we received a presentation from a representative of an organization called One Voice for Change, which is a Boulder County-based nonprofit organization that offered to facilitate a relationship between the city of Lafayette and the city of Iquitos in Peru with their counterpart called Amazon Youth located in Peru. And so those two organizations completed a memorandum of understanding that outlined a number of what the, really the components of what this relationship would look like. That was provided to council in June. And so tonight, the, the resolution before you would really just memorialize this relationship and authorize One Voice for Change to begin, uh, these activities on our behalf. So the resolution tonight begins by recognizing the city's interests in cultural exchange and acknowledging these past discussions with council. And then, um, as mentioned, memorializes the partnership between the city and One Voice for Change and authorizes them to manage this partnership on behalf of us and, uh, affirms that it would be done so at no cost to the city. So just a brief presentation, um, resolution was in your packet this evening and I have motion language here on the screen for your consideration. And then I believe Felicity is here if there are any questions about One Voice for Change or that partnership.
Thank you so much, uh, to staff. Felicity, would you like to share any words since you're here?
I just, I just want to say thank you so much for the opportunity and, um, and it's just that I am so honored to live in Lafayette. I'm very honored. We have a community that really cares. We have a community that has heart for the environment, our animals, our people, our schools are wonderful. Our people are solid. Um, so I. So I just couldn't be happier living here. So I think this will be a wonderful opportunity to have educational exchange, teacher exchanges, professional development for teachers, cultural exchanges. There's a number of opportunities that will be opened up because of this, and this will be in your legacy, Mayor Manget. And I just thank you so much. Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, we'll take questions first to see if there are any for staff or for Felicity here? No? Okay.
Yeah.
If not, we will take a motion, please.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2025-43, Establishing a Sister City Partnership with the City of Iquitos, Peru.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None opposed? That motion passes unanimously.
Yay! All right. We have a sister city.
Thank you, yes.
Hear that, Mayor Chang?
So just now that that's been approved, I want to thank you so much. So next steps would be, are you, will you communicate this with Mayor Chang down in Peru?
Oh, yes. And we're waiting for their resolution, too. So they're working on the resolution. I think they were waiting for our meeting tonight to make sure things were moving forward.
Perfect. And so I'm sure you'll communicate with them and express this.
I will.
I think down the road here, we should shoot for an in-person visit, either them coming here or us going down there.
Yes.
I'm serious. I need some students down there or something along those lines to really get things started. But we'll be in talks about that a little bit later down the road. But I just want to say thank you to your organization. We'll continue to stay in touch. And please use me as a resource as well if you'd like, you know, just want to talk about how the relationship works.
We'll be in touch. Yeah. Thank you, council. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all so much. Really appreciate that. That's something I've been talking about since my first year on council.
I think you've got seven chaperones too bad.
There you go, yeah. Remote attendance, all seven of us. All right. All right. Well, thank you all. That concludes regular business for tonight and brings us to staff reports, beginning with the city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything to report tonight, but I did want to answer a question from earlier on the, during your discussion on board and commission, term limits and discussion, term limits and terms. I wasn't able to find the term limits in our charter because, for council, because it's not in there. And so I had to go back and look, and it's set by our constitution. So I just wanted to clarify that. The constitution does say that you do need that full four-year term before you can serve another term after being term limited on our city council. So I just wanted you to know the answer is out there. I just had to recall that was not in our charter, but there is the answer for you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. To the city manager's report.
Yeah, good evening and thank you, council. So a few things going on this week, so I'm really excited that we're going to be holding our fourth annual employee, summer employee event tomorrow at Wanaka Lake. This is a fun celebration, casual celebration, especially for all of our seasonals that are starting to depart us now that it's time to go back to school. So we will have most of our city facilities closed beginning at 1:00 tomorrow. The golf course will be open and Wanaka, or I'm sorry, the Great Outdoors Waterpark will reopen at 4:00 for your sunset swim, but all the others will be closed from 1:00 until their normal closing time, which is typically 5:00 p.m. Also, the recreation center is already closed, which is why we typically hold this event at this week, because they are doing their maintenance week. So this is a really important week where they're able to clear all the facilities and get a lot of the major maintenance, painting, repairs done so that we don't disrupt while our patrons are there. So it is closed from August 4th yesterday to the 10th. And then along the lines with recreation, don't forget the recreation fee study survey online is closing August 13th, so please be sure to take it. That valuable input will help us set kind of our philosophy as we move forward, looking at what and how we set our rates for various programs and services. And then I did want to have a quick discussion with Mayor Manget's permission to determine the fishbowl, minimum wage fishbowl participation. So we did confirm with the City of Longma, if you recall, this was an idea brought up by Councilor Barnes in conjunction with the Longma Council, that their fishbowl will be held on Monday, August 25th, from 5:30 to 7:30. We're still working on the businesses that will be there to help provide context, but they did allow for one council member to be part of the panel that will be asking questions to various businesses. And so I would like to see if we could get tonight that representative so we could connect with them to get further information about that evening. So whoever would be interested, available, and willing to attend in Longma, August 25th, 5:30 to 7:30. Of course, you're also able to attend as a participant, but this would be our official Lafayette representative.
Yes. So we do need a member of council to serve in that representative role. The dates and times are on the screen there for you. Is anyone in council interested in being a representative for the fishbowl? Councilor Taffey-Vegan?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilor Barnes?
I'll go.
We can only have one representative, but if you're interested as well.
Yeah.
All right. Sounds good. Well, Councilor Taffey-Vegan, thank you for helping us out with that. And I'm sure staff will be in touch with next steps.
Yep. Great. Thank you. All right. Looking forward to our next meeting. We have just added another item on that, and that would be the board and commission term limits. But we also will have several resolutions, many of which we've talked about, but one, assigning those private activity bonds that we discussed at your last workshop meeting. I am pleased to announce that we have selected a new chief financial officer that also serves as your city treasurer. She will be joining on August 18th, and so at your 19th meeting, you do by your code need to appoint them as a city treasurer by resolution. Also, we are continuing on with our bond conversations by passing a resolution for the bond language, as well as calling a November election. And then we have two items related to planning and building stuff. One is a site plan architectural review for kinder care that's been reviewed by the Planning Commission, and then approving a parking modification for Reed Queen. And then we anticipate ratifying or putting forward the ratification for your collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police. And then if you recall, when we passed the model traffic code adoption about a month or so ago, we had highlighted that we were still working on some ordinances related to media, and so we'll be bringing that forward. And then your appointment to your youth advisory board. And then your August 26 workshop is that large introduction to kind of the budget, 2026 budget. So we're really excited to kind of preview where we're at, kind of from a financial status, where we're prioritizing some funding. And then also give you an update. We have selected a contractor to help with the design and outreach for the 701 Pocket Park, and they'll be providing you some context of how they're going to be approaching that, as well as what council's role will be in that selection. So looking forward to those conversations. Thank you. That's all I have tonight.
All right. Thank you. All right. We'll go on to council comments, council reports. We'll start down with Councilor W. Big. I think you sit there all the time.
It's a good seat.
Yeah. It's on the end.
No reports. Thanks.
Okay. Councilor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a DDA meeting coming up next Monday, I believe it is. Yeah, so we'll meet, we were off schedules in order to get advice on our plan, our strategic plan. But we're back to regular meetings. We'll be meeting on Monday, and the senior advisory board will be meeting on following Tuesday. And I just need to make a comment about the, I'm seeing a lot of bicycling activity with electric motorcycles, and it's a little unnerving. So if you are riding an electric motorcycle, please be careful with your speeds, and please don't ride them on sidewalks. Seen some behavior I don't really like. And just need to put that out there. And I think I'll leave it with that.
All right. Councilor Fiedman?
Yeah, so at our July workshop, we talked airport stuff. And one of the things that I brought up and that we discussed a little bit there was some of the changes that we saw, maybe like mid to late June, up until probably, well, up until now, we think. And we then had a meeting with RMMA and discussed many, many things. It was overall a very positive meeting. And they gave us additional detail on the route changes that were instructed by air traffic control. And basically, the instruction is meet at Good Samaritan Hospital and then come into the airspace for RMMA from there. And so what that has led to is a lot of folks going down 287, but folks from all over directions going through our community to that point so they can enter the pattern. I think it's important for us to make comments on this and just say it out loud, hey, we don't appreciate not being included in any conversation when you make changes like this. And generally, you know, things are also a challenge directly to air traffic control. So I appreciate staff's preparation of a letter so far to get sort of some draft content so that council has something to respond to. So we'd love to, with the support of council, instruct staff tonight to send that out to the entire council for review so it can be approved and sent to air traffic control and the FAA and probably others on CC.
Okay.
Yeah, just so that they know that we sent it. So curious if you have any questions? I know that there's a lot there, and I tried to go quickly because I didn't want to take a bunch of time on this. There's a lot more detail certainly that I'd be happy to, you know, help you understand. And I'm sure the letter will also be eliminating. Any comments or questions?
Comments or questions?
I guess I will say it's an incredibly complex issue, so I appreciate the, us trying to move forward with a plan to address it because it's, there's a lot to consider.
Yep. And, you know, I think we were clear on our direction that we want to move forward with having a conversation, you know, at a later time with some expertise. And so this is really just one piece to make sure that if this is a moment where it's important that we say something on this change, that we will have said it. So that was the intention, not to get in front of that process at all, but just make sure we didn't miss our chance.
Okay. Thoughts from council? Are we supportive of sending out this letter or issues? Okay. All right.
I think it's what's sending, we're giving our support to send the letter to us to be able to read it.
Correct.
And then from there, if we think it's all okay, we just respond back. Okay.
Yep.
All right. Well, it sounds like you have support from council.
Amazing. Thank you, everybody. The last thing I'll say is, I think at some point, I don't think it's tonight, because I think there's a lot more information that we need to find, but I would like to maybe debrief on the prairie dog conversation at a certain point, whenever that seems appropriate. And, you know, I think there were some comments brought up tonight that should we revisit the ordinance to make sure it's clear? I don't know if that's required or not, but I think we should at least give ourselves the chance to ask that question and make sure if we need to make changes, we should have that conversation at a certain point.
Great. Thank you. Mayor Portemonge?
Just a couple items. Dr. Cog has their regular workshop meeting tomorrow night, next week on the 13th. I'm forgetting the time, so I'm looking at the city manager. For Willoughby Corner Ribbon Cutting?
Four to six.
Four to six. Thank you. And that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, it's in the, okay, I'm getting my dates confused. Okay, great. Councilor Gavies?
On behalf of the library board, I wanted to share that the latest Friends of the Library Foundation book sale raised $5,869. And that's all to support library programming, like our summer reading program, which was highly successful and attended this year.
Thank you. Councilor Sampson?
I just want to give a shout out to the building inspection team. I know they're a group of people that do not like getting shouted out or being noticed, but they do a great job. There was a couple questions I ended up calling in on, and they were thorough in their response. So nice job. Apparently, it's Greg and the Kevins, right? Way to go, Greg and the Kevins.
Thank you. Just a point of clarification, the Willoughby Corner Ribbon Cutting, is that on the 21st, right?
My mistake.
21st, correct.
Thank you for the correction, Mayor. Appreciate it.
All right. Okay. And nothing for me tonight, because we do have an executive session we need to get to as well. So I move to adjourn to executive session, presented sections 24-6, that's 402B, other coronavirus statutes. For purposes of prefer, with the city attorney to receive legal advice and specifically questions regarding procedural and legal requirements for the enactment or repeal of local sales taxes. I do have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? That passes unanimously. The city council will adjourn to executive session and will not return to an open meeting. The time is now 7:48 p.m. Thank you. The time is now 7:48 PM. Thank you.